Scott, did you pick the wrong straw tonight?
No, that's fine. A couple of my, a couple of my articles are on here.
Oh, who's going to Shubig?
Bob Millman is coming back. I convinced him to come back again.
Oh, wow.
Pulling out of the, pulling out of the.
Nicely done, Bear. Nicely done.
Yeah, I know, right? I know.
They'll be happy.
Reserve, reserve wages. I know. They're, pulled them out of the bullpen.
Wow.
And the town is very excited to get him back, too.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Did his wife come back with him?
I assume so. I didn't, I didn't ask, but I think they were building a house, they're building a new house here in the state.
Oh, wow. Wow.
Commissioner Coward, we're, we're live on.
Are we live? Okay, are we, and then have we had any, have we had any comments so far?
We have not.
Okay, well, why don't we call the meeting to order? So I will hereby call to order the meeting of the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. This is Wednesday, May 20th, 2020. The time is just slightly after 5:30 PM. And the meeting is now in order. First, I would welcome a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 11. Jim, did you get names for that?
I got Withone, I got Gordon with the motion and Withone as second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none. Jim, if you, Jim Gailey, if you could call the roll, that would be great.
Uh, Withoneis?
Yes.
Gordon? Cludier? Jameson?
Yes.
Coward?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Okay. Are there any informational reports or presentations from the county manager?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Kennedy, any comments that'll come in in the last 20 seconds?
Uh, no, no comments at all.
We'll check back before the end of the meeting. Next is a consent agenda, which is items 20 dash 41, approval to submit a grant to the Justice and Mental Health Collaboration Program 2020. Uh, item 20 dash oh four two, approval of the March-April Sheriff Office Commissions. Uh, item number 20 dash oh four three, approval of the extension of the Sheriff's Office Patrol Contract with Shubig Island. Uh, and 20 dash, um, zero forty-four, approval of the extension of the Sheriff's Office Patrol Contract with uh, school administrative district number six, which is Bonnie Eagle. Uh, does anybody want to pull any of those off? And if, and if not, Steve, you're, you're, Steve Gordon, you're muted. I can hear.
Move we approved the consent.
Okay, moved by Steve Gordon, seconded by Neil Jameson. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, Jim Gailey, if you could call the roll on that motion, please.
Uh, Withoneis?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Cludier?
Yes.
Coward?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Okay, the consent agenda has been moved. Uh, next is new business. Uh, the first is item 20 dash oh four five, amending and accepting the 2019 uh, Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan to include CARE Act funding allocation. Uh, Jim Gailey, I'll turn that over to you.
Okay, uh, this item is coming forward. I think we gave you a heads up on this two weeks ago when we met.
Yeah.
Is the CARE Act funds that we receive as a county of just over $900,000. Uh, Kristin Stiles, the Director of CDBG, has been, uh, doing dual duty, trying to get the 2020 Annual Action Plan uh, out the door, which, uh, she did last week, and then at the same time, just another $930,000 in trying to disperse that out so that, uh, we could meet this evening, uh, on the outcomes of, uh, the application process. So I'll stop talking, but kick it over to Kristin to, uh, run us through, uh, what she has done over the last week, week and a half with the Municipal Oversight Committee on allocating of these funds. Kristin?
Thank you very much. I also wanted to just, um, stop and say thank you all very much for taking the time to have a special meeting so that we didn't need to wait until June to get these funds out into the community. I know there's a lot of people that are really anxious to get these funds, and it will mean a lot that, um, we're able to do this faster. So, uh, what HUD has asked us to do is, instead of making this its, its own set of funding, they're asking us to amend our, um, last year's consolidated plan. And, uh, we will be adding the $920,165 to that. So that is what was allocated to Cumberland County from the first wave of CARES Act funds. We should, um, potentially be getting some from the second and third wave of funding. Um, but what they wanted us to do was go ahead and get that first wave out into the community as fast as possible. So what we did was we worked with, um, South Portland and Bridgeton and, um, came up with an expedited process that would take us not several months, but weeks instead to get these funds allocated. So on, um, May 24th, we released an application. This application allowed anyone that was able to do community development block grant activities, meaning that they're serving lower moderate income people. Um, and specifically, they're for the prevention of preparation for and response to the coronavirus. So if they met both of those categories of serving low and moderate income people and preventing, preparing for, responding to the coronavirus, they are able to apply for these funds. So, um, we got a total of 17 applications. Three were for Bridgeton. Bridgeton decided to pull out and kind of do their own process instead. Um, and then, um, the rest of it was for South Portland and Cumberland County. Um, from the, uh, packet, uh, what we did was we took a small admin fee. This is pretty much to just cover, um, all of the expenses that we're going to have with running the program. Uh, we tried to take as little admin as possible. It came out to a little less than 4%, so at $35,000. Then we, um, have 520,000 that is going to Cumberland County activities. We have 113,000 that's going to Bridgeton and 251,000 that's going to South Portland. So of the applications, what we really prioritized were programs that were serving a large geographic area. We wanted ones that were serving all of Cumberland County if possible, um, excluding, uh, excluding the city of Portland and Brunswick, um, who are not part of our Cumberland County entitlement jurisdiction. Uh, we're actually fairly satisfied with the applications that we got. Um, we wanted to prioritize business assistance. This is, um, not to replace the SBAs programs of the PPP or the idle program. This is for the people or businesses that are falling through the gaps. We wanted to make sure that our small businesses are not being hurt by the gaps in the SBAs programs. Uh, then we wanted rental and mortgage assistance programs. Uh, this is also kind of combined with homeless prevention to make sure that, um, during this time when a lot of people are losing their jobs, nobody is being kicked out of their home, um, because they're not able to pay rent or pay their utility bills. We wanted a, uh, food program that would serve all of Cumberland County. Uh, we didn't actually end up getting an application for that. I reached out to Wayside Foods and, um, Good Shepherd about this. And what ended up happening was during the time that our application was released, both organizations received very large USDA grants, uh, and they kind of felt that it would be double dipping to be going after our funds and those funds, and it would be hard for them to track them separately. So they, uh, decided not to, um, apply for our funding there. But we did get quite a few, um, applications for, uh, food assistance programs. Uh, one of them that we were really happy about was the Meals on Wheels program. This is our senior population that, um, as you all know, is one of the highest risk categories for, um, coronavirus. And they have seen a 40% increase in the number of, um, people needing assistance in Cumberland County. So we're happy that, um, that one applied and that the committee decided to fund that project. The last category is a, a broad range of, um, programs that decided to apply. We have shelter assistance in Bridgeton, um, general assistance in, uh, South Portland, a, um, public health specialist in Westbrook, and then the Cumberland County, um, EMA Emergency Shelter Supplies. We worked with EMA and came to the determination that there's actually no grants out there that they could apply for, um, including FEMA that would actually cover this, and it is CDBG eligible. So, uh, we had encouraged them to apply for that program. And then Long Island asked for, um, funds for a telehealth clinic. So of the, uh, applications we got, um, we are, most of them are being funded. The few that aren't being funded are the ones that are, um, not serving a large area, which is what, uh, the, um, review team decided to prioritize. So the review team reviewed the applications. They did it in a very timely, speedy manner. Um, I really appreciate all of their work going through these applications so quickly. Uh, and they scored all of the applications, and in the packet you have, you can see their scores, um, along with what we have chosen, uh, to fund. And I guess I'll, I'll stop there and ask if anyone has any questions. I know I've been rambling, sorry.
No. Any questions for Kirsten? Okay, no, no questions.
All right, so we have the Cumberland County, South Portland and, um, Bridgeton projects. South Portland and Bridgeton are both, um, quite satisfied with who is being funded in their areas, and then the rest are, uh, the county programs. And then if all goes well, we have our public comment period ending tomorrow, and we will submit this to HUD on Friday. And we've been told that we'll receive the funds before June.
Hmm.
Excellent, next week.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, um, amend, um, the CDBG program to include the, uh, most recent, um, receipt of, uh, potential receipt of funds.
Uh, Commissioner Jameson moves. Commissioner Withoneis seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gailey, can you call the roll, please? You need to unmute yourself, Jim.
Thank you. My dog came in the room. She was making noise. Withoneis?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yeah, yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Cludier?
Jim is muted.
Cludier?
Jim?
Cludier? Coward?
Yes.
Cludier?
Looks like he might be frozen. We might have lost him.
Saying Cludier or Bueller? Bueller?
Bueller.
Bueller?
Jim, give us a, Jim Cludier, give us a, oh, there you go.
I say, uh, yes. And I also say, how come Spectrum cut off my internet for a minute?
I don't know. They're probably on our side on this one. Okay. Uh, that passes unanimously. Thank you so much. Next is, uh, uh, under new businesses, item number 20 dash oh four six, amending county commissioner bylaws, second reading. Jim Gailey, you can have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, this is second reading of the bylaws change, uh, pertaining to the, uh, change of our, from our calendar year to a fiscal year, budgeting purposes. Uh, as the commissioners know, I brought forward this, this month, and this probably is not the right time and as for you to amend the bylaws to kick it out one additional year. So instead, instead of starting it off July 2021, the bylaws have been changed to reflect would be kicked off July 2022. Uh, the town managers that I have met with, uh, via video call this week when I announced this, uh, very appreciative, uh, of the commissioners' efforts, uh, in changing this up, uh, because they are feeling the pinch, especially the larger communities. Uh, and so, uh, they just want to pass on a, a thank you to the commissioners for recognizing that this was going to impact to the communities and that you were adjusting, uh, before we got too far down the road. So, uh, this item is second reading and, uh, ready for final action by the commissioners.
Yeah, my, uh, my only, my only comment before I ask, ask for a motion is Jim Gailey, if you could pass back to the managers at some point. We really appreciate them, uh, as well. I mean, this is a, this is a big inconvenience to them that is, is, is to, the goal is to create a better efficiencies and great convenience for the county. So, uh, I appreciate that this whole process is not their, not their favorite thing, and, uh, we are, we are trying to, you know, keep, keep everybody accommodated, and we appreciate, I appreciate feedback, uh, feedback like that. So thank you very much. And I would entertain a motion, uh, on this item.
Of passage.
Jim, Cludier moves to pass second, uh, seconded by Susan Withoneis. Any further discussion? Jim Gailey, can you take the roll, please?
Withoneis?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Jameson?
Yes.
Cludier? Coward?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Next item, comments from county manager.
I just have a few. I, I hate to, um, try to filibuster on you, Chairman.
That's okay.
I just have a few that I thought would be pertinent, uh, to let you know about. Um, I have been working this week with staff to see what we can do about, uh, soft opening of our buildings. Uh, we're parking June 8th at this time. Uh, and, uh, when I say working with staff, it's been primarily the District Attorney's Office, the Regent of Deeds, and, uh, probate. Uh, those are the, the large foot traffic, uh, departments that we have. Uh, and we have developed a game plan on, uh, people in to these areas by appointment only, uh, with the exception of the DA's office. They never closed over the last two months restitution payment, uh, but the deeds and it have. And so, uh, starting June 8th, there will be, um, by appointment only, uh, meetings, uh, with both offices. And we will be working towards, uh, a full opening. But, uh, probate is restricted somewhat because the courts are not fully opened. So there is a, there's a merrying of the court schedule because the front door needs to open and the marshals need to be there. Uh, so it's a, it's a little bit of hodgepodge right now. Hence why I say it's a soft opening because we are not going to be running normal hours and normal days. Uh, but it is going to be opening up the doors to the public, uh, to some extent, uh, during the week of starting June 8th. So, uh, we're getting there. Uh, we have decided that we will still keep the jail, um, the public out of the jail, uh, the, uh, communication center and EMAs. Those are three. Will be exempt from the soft opening, uh, for the time being. Um, one question I had was, we are running up against, uh, a mayor's, uh, emergency declaration that, uh, ends June 11th. There's no telling what's, or if she will extend that declaration. And I have noticed, uh, through my meetings with town managers around the region, so going back to in-person meetings. And so I wanted to, uh, commissioners, on your comfort levels, um, when you would like to explore in-person meetings, if you would like to maybe go video meeting in June and shoot for a July, or whether you'd just like to keep it through the summer, uh, video meeting. Uh, but ultimately, video meetings will go away once the governor, uh, rescinds the declaration because that's how we are able to meet, uh, by, is through that declaration. Any thought of when she's going to do that? I can't tell you. Uh, I can only tell you that as we have all experienced over the last two, two weeks, things seem to be opening up more and more, uh, daily. And, uh, we just don't know. And so I'm asking the question now, uh, in anticipation, but I still think the June 8th meeting will fall underneath that declaration because that, the declaration currently on the table is, uh, I think it ends June 11th. So I just want to throw that out and see what the commissioners, uh, wishes would be.
Commissioners, what do you think?
So I would say definitely June tribute by Zoom video, and let's feel it out from there. Let's leave it open-ended.
Yeah.
Give us an opportunity to gauge it, see what's happening. Uh, we want to make sure that we're making the smart and the right decision.
I agree.
Me too.
Steve Gordon, any further thoughts?
Thing I was thinking about is, is Jim, uh, said something about, uh, maybe through the summer. And, um, uh, but I'm, I'm willing to go with, with what the rest of the group wants.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of skeptical that we're going to be able to, this, that the whole society is going to be able to open up as quickly as people are thinking. Um, I think the opinion polls are that most people think we ought to be staying locked down for a while. I'm perfectly happy to have the next meeting via video meeting, and then, and then as everyone else suggests, we see, we see where we are. Um, um, I'm, uh, you know, I'm not sure, I'm not an epidemiologist. I have no expert opinion on anything with this. But, um, I am personally planning on staying as sheltered as I can, uh, uh, as long as, as long as it looks like I need to, which I, I think will be many months. So, uh, I'm, so I'm not sure, but for our purpose, for our purposes, yes, I think we need to, I think we need to see how it goes and have video meetings, um, as long as, as long as necessary, certainly, certainly the meeting in June. Uh, and then we'll, and then we'll just figure out how it goes. I mean, we may not be able to do it if the governor doesn't extend, extend the current order, then we can't do it anyway. Uh, and we'll have to figure out how to, you know, here we could use the civic center, and we each get one corner, and we can shout at each other across the, uh, across the way or something, and Jim can sit in the middle and take notes. But, you know, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I guess my other concern about this is, is our employees. You know, it sounds like we're doing a soft is also means very slow, it sounds like. I think that's good. Uh, I'm really, uh, I know we are not in this position, but I really feel one of the, one of the, one of the problems from the, uh, I think small contingent of people are saying we need to open up now is that means that other people are going to put their lives at risk so that we can get our haircut and our hamburgers delivered and, you know, get McDonald's open and so forth. And I, I really don't want our, our own employees to be put in that, you know, put in that position. Uh, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to do about that, or if we can do anything about it, but I think we need to go very cautiously. So, anyway, uh, I guess these are my comments for, for, for the closing, so I'll, I'll stop now. And any further discussion on this particular item? Jim, does that give you, oh, sorry, Steve.
Well, I, I guess my presumption is, is that Jim is going to talk to us at some time about, uh, in a workshop about those issues and what we're doing. I mean, you made mention of, of some of the employees. I, I don't know what the thoughts are. We're going to, maybe there are some employees, we're just going to suggest they work from home. Uh, so there's a whole, whole host of issues that we should have some sort of a discussion about.
This is a discussion we'll be having over the next several months and possibly many months. But I'm, you know, I'm really, I'm, I'm concerned about our employees. I don't want people to be put in a position to put themselves in unsafe, unsafe situation. Uh, and, and, you know, and we have to balance that with, you know, mandates from other branches of government about how we do things and so forth. So I mean, it's a, it's going to be a, it's going to be, uh, walking a tightrope. And, uh, you know, I think we can, I think we could certainly feel our way as, as, as we need to. But I'm certainly open to further discussions of that. Jim Gailey, does that help you out with your?
It does, it does. And I should clarify that we've spent a significant amount of time over the last couple of weeks while we haven't had employees in the offices to really develop, um, safeguards.
Okay.
Uh, and one of those, uh, big safeguards that probate and, uh, deeds have had, um, Plexiglas, uh, installed along the, their counters. So there's distinct separation between them and the public. In addition, uh, any public coming into our buildings will be, provide their own mask and wear that mask, uh, into our offices. So there, those are just two of the examples, um, that we've been working on. But we've gone to the extent of, uh, purchasing UV wands to, uh, to kill the germs on packaging and documents in, in, uh, offices. So there have been many different mitigating factors that we've, uh, worked through over the last couple of weeks to get to us to this conversation about a soft opening. So, uh, business is, uh, business as usual, uh, just two months ago, uh, all that's changed within our offices. So, um, the other thing that I had is just to let you know that I'll be sending something out to you in a couple of days. Um, I'd like to get the, uh, Finance Committee Caucus information out.
YouTube is telling me we're live.
In the first of June, uh, because.
Yeah, good idea.
If we're still on, um, video come this fall, it may be a tougher process to run the, the budget, uh, through the Finance Committee via video. So it might take a couple more meetings. I'd rather have that flexibility going into September that we've gone through a caucus in June, in July, and we've, uh, put together the Finance Committee to start right from September 1st. Usually we don't start up until the end of September. I'd like to start up right after Labor Day this year and really map out a number of meetings so that we can assure ourselves that we finish on time.
By the way, by the way, Jim, we've lost our chairman.
Nope, I'm still here.
No, 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 of the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Finance Committee. I thought, I thought I'd gone offline. I can still see myself, so.
I understand that, yeah. We're going to pack things back together here.
Who was chair? I can't remember.
Who was chair?
Yeah.
Bill Whitten.
Oh. Where'd he go?
He resigned.
Oh.
He resigned from the committee or he resigned from the town?
Resigned from the town.
Wow.
Yeah. So, um, lastly, I just wanted to pass on, uh, that FEMA has certified us as, uh, a alternative care facility at the Cross Insurance Arena. So, all, all there, uh, and we are prepared to open that place up if need be. So, some good news after two months worth of wrangling language and everything else. So, um, that concludes my, my communications, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other executive staff? Alex Kimball, do you have anything you want to add to our meeting?
I want to add an interesting tidbit. Um, had a bit of an interesting day today, and this is something to pass along as you speak to people in other communities, particularly, uh, municipalities. Uh, I logged into the state unemployment website this morning, discovered that four active employees who are very much still employed had supposedly filed for unemployment. All of those employment employees were quite surprised to learn this. Um, so this is obviously somebody somewhere out there, um, got access to this. Based off of the odd spread of the employees, um, I had a suspicion that it wasn't just a county thing and reached out to a few municipalities. And right away got a hit from City of Portland who confirmed that they are having the exact same problem at us all of a sudden. So, um, something out there has gotten into the state unemployment system. It's not just us, it's a bunch of places. Heads up, we've all known that the various fraudsters are out there in force as a result of this. And it looks like they've seized on to this as something to take advantage of. So something to pass along, um, and something, obviously, we're keeping a close eye on, but it's definitely a statewide issue.
Well, Alex, are they, are they having the money sent elsewhere? I mean, how are they getting the funds?
Unfortunately, I can't find out any of these things. The main Department of Labor will not pick up their phone, will not respond to emails. They are completely overloaded. So what I can do is deny the requests, which is easy enough. It won't go anywhere. I shot it right down, but if there are municipalities or entities out there that aren't staying right on this, uh, some, one of those could get through. Some one of those could get through. So I don't know nearly as much as I'd like simply because the Department of Labor overload. And I'm pretty sure that's exactly why this is occurring is because the fraudsters know that they're on overload.
Alex, this afternoon or probably about an hour ago, I received an email from the Department of Labor.
Interesting.
They were connected, one of the town managers I sent an email to this morning about the issue. Has used a connection through his wife that was in state government and who let the DOL know of the situation. And so the DOL has reached out to me, has asked for the name of the foreign peoples and their hometowns. So I need to talk to them tonight.
Okay, I can shoot you obviously the list. Yeah, because it's so all over the place. It is definitely something all over there. That's good. Me screaming from rooftops wasn't really getting much.
Yeah, one of my, one of my family members is currently on the unemployment program. And they were, I mean, she got in early, but it's, it's just like, they just have to like stamp it and start sending you money. They really don't have time. Department of Labor, it really doesn't have time to, just so overwhelmed. So I'm not surprised at all that this is, that this is going on. It's been, it's been a really, a really huge lifeline for people who are in this position. So I understand why we're doing it. And we have to, you know, you have to kind of go around and put out the little, the little bits of fraud and so forth that happen. But I think the program itself is doing, operating as it's supposed to. So yeah, but thanks, 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 Alex, for letting us know about that. Anything further? Any other, who else is here? Mr. Stuart, do you want to make a comment or?
Nope, just that I had those two contracts to get approved. And you'll have others in, in the issue. As the county manager knows, everybody's, a lot of the, these contract towns have pushed their town meetings back with everything going on, but it's not really that long of a, in the early parts of July. So it's, it's going to affect us and there's a clause in the current contracts now written in there that is, acts like an evergreen, evergreen clause, basically.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for bringing those. And also thanks for, you know, this is a great service to our local communities too. And I think it's, you know, a good partnership. So I'm happy to, I'm happy when these come up for renewal. Because I think that, I think that's an interesting feature of law enforcement in Maine is the, is this type of, this type of arrangement. Yes, anything further from staff? Seeing none, commissioners, anybody want to, Susan, do you want to make a comment?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, Steve Gordon, anything from you?
I have nothing other than I advise people to start to find out how they can vote. They, that's, that's going to be something within the towns and so forth. And depending on how the governor calls staying, staying in place, it could be an issue.
Thank you. Okay, okay, thank you. Jim Cludier, any, any comments from you?
No, nothing in particular except to say the event, somebody is watching this, there is going to be an election on July fourteenth, which we'll have another meeting before then. Following up on Steve's I think there's going to be a lot of publicity about how to gain and use an absentee ballot and vote by mail or you can go on the state's website and sign up and they transmit to the local town. Basically, you're dealing with the, with the town clerk or the city clerk to, to get an absentee ballot. Maine, after a long kind of pushing and shoving match that about what, what was necessary in order to qualify for an absentee ballot. Maine is one of the states that says, you don't have to qualify at all. Just ask for one and we'll give you one and you can vote. And that used to be, you had to prove that you were going to be in, you know, Arkansas or something in order to get one. You don't have to do that anymore in Maine. So I think people are going to push voting by mail among candidates. And, and that's an easy way to be safe and, and remember to vote and get it done frankly ahead of time if you want to. Other than that, I don't have anything to say. I'm, I'm delighted with the warm weather. Once again, I have no lettuce growing. I don't know what happened to those seeds, but you know, hope springs a tramp.
Commissioner Jameson?
Yeah, I would just say thank you to our veterans as we approach Memorial Day weekend. And as Jim said, echo the, the onslaught of the warm weather and get out there and enjoy what Cumberland County has to do. You don't need to necessarily violate the governor's orders. You can walk and enjoy yourselves. And just everyone stay safe and healthy and smart.
Okay, thank you very much. My only comment is to echo, echo Jim Cludier, figure out how you vote. Make sure you do. I voted absentee for five years when we lived in England and it was, you know, it was an interesting, interesting thing, interesting thing to do. We used to have interesting conversations going to get my ballot, which was a multi-page fold-out kind of thing. And most, the rest of the world, when you vote on something, you get a three by five card with four names on it and that's all your choice. And here we had, you know, did the school, we borrowed money to put a new roof on the school, were we going to, you know, amend the constitution, we're going to do this, that or the other. I was just amazed, people that the depths to which our democracy runs and it's important. It's important, it's a rare privilege to be able to have so much local personal control over these things. And you only exercise it by exercising it, by getting out to vote. So that's all, that's all from me. And if no one has anything else, I'd love to have a motion to adjourn. I see Susan Whitonis moves and I think it was, okay, Neil Jameson seconds. And any, anyone in favor can hit your leave button. And anyone who is not in favor can just stay and look at the screen.